Good evening. The February 22nd, 2023 council meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera is absent. Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Long Branch Mayor, City Council, and Administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect that values the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Madam Clerk, your certification?
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. And at this time, we will have our presentation. Kiara Johnson, please come forward. Ayana Reed. Honesty Sims and Janai Burke of the African American Culture Club. Thank you. Hi. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Kiara Johnson. I am in 11th grade.
I'm Janai Burke and I'm also in 11th grade.
And will be presenting Black History Tribute by Donna Pigram. "I gave you a piece of me, my mind, my passion, my vision, which you used but did not recognize my identity. You did not talk about me, who I was, what I contributed. You maced me and beat me when all I wanted was to be recognized for my genius, for my creativity, for my hard work. I am black. I am an African American."
"I owe those before me, those today, and those tomorrow, to speak about their glory, their fight, and their royalty. Yes, royalty we are. We are a resilient culture full of many great beings. We have shared for years and gave and gave. We must recognize the blood, sweat, and tears of those who brought music, art, education, technology, politics, law, activism, sports, and medicine that provide the foundation to our nation. Celebrate us, appreciate us, honor us, thank us, and recognize us."
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Wow.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th, 2023.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Consideration of ordinances, public hearing, and final consideration. An ordinance designating parking prohibited at all times, north and south sides of Stokes Place. This ordinance was introduced on February 8th, 2023, and prohibits parking on both sides of Stokes Place the entire length from Third Avenue to Memorial Parkway. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. I need a motion to close.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2-23, entitled, "An Ordinance Designating Parking Prohibited at All Times, North and South Sides of Stokes Place." I need a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
0323, An Ordinance Rescinding Certain Restricted Parking on Franklin Avenue. This ordinance was introduced on February 8th, 2023, and rescinds parking restrictions in front of 112 Franklin Avenue. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. Can I see none? I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the second reading of ordinance 3-23, entitled, "An Ordinance Rescinding Certain Restricted Parking on Franklin Avenue." I need a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance 04-23, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Long Branch Approving and Adopting Redevelopment Plan for the Non- condemnation Redevelopment Area Consistent at Block 274 Lot 1, Block 311 Lots 1.01 and 1.02, and Block 283.01 Lots 1.01 and 1.02." This ordinance enters into a redevelopment agreement with the city and PV Broadway LLC, who will redevelop the lower Broadway corridor portion of the redevelopment area, including properties located along Broadway, Second Avenue, Belmont, Memorial Parkway, and Union Avenues, after subdividing and merging various parcels. The project area will be redeveloped by constructing no more than 299 residential units, including at least 30 units of affordable housing, approximately 22,000 square feet of retail, commercial, restaurant space, approximately 558 off-street service parking spaces, no tax exemption, and no raps from the city. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law, and set the public hearing for March 22nd, 2023. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Council President, if I can, I just want to correct something from the summary that was read. Obviously, the ordinance is correct. There is already a redevelopment agreement between the city and PV Broadway. This ordinance is to amend the lower Broadway redevelopment plan for the purpose of approving the redevelopment plan that is consistent with the redevelopment agreement that the council entered into this past September.
Thank you. So we have our motions. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Same. Public participation for resolutions and all general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make, please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Requesting one-minute notification. Vincent Lapore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. We're doing the SPCA contract again tonight. The certified minutes of the January 25th council meeting state the following. Quote, "Mr. Lapore asked Council President Wittes if she would have voted in favor of Resolution 32122 authorizing the SPCA contract if she was at the meeting. Council President Wittes stated that she would have voted in favor of the resolution." End quote. Tonight, Ms. Wittes, could you please explain what the issue was with city animal control that prompted your endorsement of the new SPCA contract provisions?
Why? Because we needed the assistance of the SPCA for the whole animal control project in Long Branch.
We needed assistance?
Yes. And I, you know, want to say assistance. Yes.
There were other routes for assistance. We could have hired a part-timer with a better performance record than the SPCA's. The minutes from the November 10th, 2021 council meeting state the following. I emphasize 2021. Quote, "Mr. Lapore spoke about the shared services agreement with the SPCA and reasons why he would like the resolution pulled from the agenda." That was Resolution 26221. End quote. At that time, I mentioned the bison incident. The city went ahead with the 2022 SPCA contract then, and the performance of the SPCA during 2022 was not good, as detailed at the December 28th, 2022 council meeting. Over the past two weeks since the last council meeting, incident report and eyewitness accounts have come forward detailing further the malpractice by the SPCA in the bison fatality. Scott Crawford and his associate did not act alone. Present on the scene on November 3rd, 2021, for the overdose, tranquilized, lethal shooting of the bison, overseeing that incident was SPCA head Ross La Citra. Ross La Citra is now being held just as responsible as Scott Crawford for the bison fatality. Animal cruelty charges are now being pursued against Ross La Citra. Ross La Citra's name, having appeared on the SPCA contract with Mayor Pallone, it is now expected the immediate resignation and/or removal of Mayor Pallone and four council members from office for endangering the health and welfare in this city of humans and animals, and for failing to do the proper diligence required before entering the SPCA contract. The SPCA contract had no basis upon which to be entered on December 28th, 2022. And again, despite the poor performance of the SPCA in Long Branch and elsewhere, and now with the criminal animal cruelty charges being pursued against Ross La Citra, the contract is essentially null and void. Despite the worthless colloquy, propaganda, and confabulations of Attorney Ray Nunez concerning the 60-day opt-out, of which as tonight, 20 days would be left, this contract is terminated. The contract upon which John Pallone entered, the SPCA contract, signature junk Pallone government. Further aggravating the SPCA ordeal was Councilman Viera. Immediately after the December 28th council meeting in this room, Councilman Viera approached Animal Control Officer Deborah Nagel.
One-minute warning.
Viera was overheard by some, including a member of the city animal welfare group, threatening and intimidating Deborah Nagel with a warrant of her personal phone records so as to find out if any of the people who spoke on behalf of Deborah Nagel that evening were contacted by her. This bullying by Councilman Viera of a professional city woman employee will not be tolerated and will not go unaccounted for. But this bullying and intimidation appears to be the mantra of the Pallone administration. Continued junk government.
I'll be helping with interpretation in English.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Patricia Vasquez.
Hello, good evening. My name is Patricia Vasquez.
I'm sorry, could you get a little closer to the mic?
Yes. Her name is Patricia Vasquez.
Okay. Vivo en 209 Garfield Avenue.
I live in 209 Garfield Avenue.
Bueno, todas las personas que estamos aquí, que nos reunimos hoy para expresar nuestro sentir que está pasando con el incremento de rentas.
All of us here today, the committee, we're here to talk about the increase of rent in Long Branch.
Que ha estado viniendo pasando por algunos años, pero por el miedo, el temor a que no seamos escuchados. Pero sabemos que ustedes son las personas, los concejales, que dirigen a la ciudad de Long Branch.
Rent increase has been happening for a couple of years now in Long Branch. So that's why, due to fear, sometimes the committee hasn't spoken out about what's happening and injustices that we face with, you know, and the challenges of paying rent in Long Branch. So that's why we're here today to express this to you today as you represent the people of Long Branch.
También sé que no hay una regularización de rentas en Long Branch, y es por eso que los dueños están abusando de la comunidad en incrementar el costo.
And we know that there is no rent control in Long Branch. That's why many of the landlords are taking advantage of this by increasing the rent at incredible amounts of money each time.
Nosotros, la comunidad trabajadora de Long Branch, no ganamos el suficiente sueldo para estar pagando incrementos grandes y abusivos de parte de los dueños.
We here in Long Branch, we're working class.
Calcar un momento que nuestra comunidad o nuestros hijos van a vivir en la calle.
And there will be a moment where our kids will have to leave in the streets because the rent increase, food increase, everything's going up.
Nuestro sueldo no alcanza para todos esos gastos que tenemos con nuestros hijos en las escuelas. Mis hijas son teenagers y necesitan muchas cosas, y no quiero que en un futuro ellas sufran esto que está pasando ahora.
My kids have teenager daughters that, you know, I have to provide for as a single mom, and it's not fair that all the struggles that we have to go through to be able to afford rent, and I don't want them to go through the same thing like I am right now.
Queremos que haya en Long Branch un control de rentas.
We want to see a rent control in Long Branch.
Y queremos también que ustedes nos entiendan como padres de familia, que la comunidad trabajadora también, no todos tenemos las mismas situaciones. No todos tenemos el mismo dinero, no todos ganamos igual, y debemos de ser conscientes de que la comunidad trabajadora trabaja con un sueldo mínimo que tal vez en un momento no va a alcanzar para todos los gastos.
Our salary is not enough to cover all the expenses that we have to go through as working-class people, and I hope that you, as parents, also can understand us how important it is that we provide shelter for our kids, right, to make sure that we are able to afford and cover their needs and our needs as well.
Y de la manera más atenta le pedimos a ustedes que están en sus manos como concejales de la comunidad de Long Branch y representantes de Long Branch, que exista un control de renta lo más pronto posible.
And I ask you, as a citizen of Long Branch, that you represent the committee, that you provide, and that you work towards passing rent control in Long Branch now.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Elba. Yo vivo en la ciudad de Asbury. Estuve viviendo aquí más de diez años en Long Branch. Me tuve que mover por los incrementos de renta.
My name is Elba. I used to live, I lived for 10 years in Long Branch, but I had to move due to the high rent increase in Long Branch, so now I live in Asbury Park.
Esta noche vengo con todo respeto a exponerles este punto que ustedes como concejales nos puedan apoyar, puedan escuchar las voces de la comunidad. Como dijo mi compañera, mi amiga, la gente trabajadora también aportamos aquí este un trabajo, unos taxes. Incrementamos también y ayudamos también en la comunidad. Entonces queremos que también nos escuchen porque yo al futuro, mis nietos van a estar viviendo en la calle si no podemos pagar una renta que cada año o cada mes los dueños empiezan a incrementar un aumento.
Quieres mencionar más acerca de porque tú dices que.
Okay. Me tuve que mudar a Asbury porque este la renta era muy alta. Aparte, aquí es muy, es imposible ya buscar un apartamento para rentar porque los dueños están subiendo muy alta las rentas. Yo tuve que mudarme porque aquí yo pagaba 1,600 de mi renta. No encontré un lugar porque piden muchos requisitos también. Aparte, ahora donde yo rento estoy pagando 2,200. Es un incremento muy alto que con el sueldo que uno gana no puede uno pagar una alta de renta en esa cifra.
And I had to move to Asbury Park because it was not, you know, I could not afford to live here any longer. And I had to switch my kids out of the school and the school system. And, you know, I was paying taxes. I paid taxes. I contribute to the economy of this, of the, you know, in my family, the state, right? And it's unfair to see, and I have the fear that, you know, my grandchildren will have to leave in the streets if we cannot longer afford to pay rent.
Con todo respeto, quisiéramos que ustedes hicieran algo al respecto para que podamos parar, poder poner un control a los arrendatarios también, para que no sigan abusando de la comunidad porque con el sueldo mínimo que tenemos no vamos a poder pagar en un futuro una renta más alta y esto está en descontrol. O sea, nos suben a veces de 300 a 600 dólares. Es una cantidad bastante alta para el sueldo que los trabajadores tenemos.
And as workers, we're not making enough money to cover a rent increase that will go from 300 to 600 dollars every year. This is unfair, so that's why we are asking you to pass a rent control ordinance because we cannot longer continue like this. You know, we're working-class people, and what we make is not enough for us to cover our housing.
Y esto nada más este afecta a la comunidad latina, afecta a todos porque aquí en la ciudad de Long Branch todos estamos sufriendo lo mismo, tanto como los inquilinos, como las personas que rentan negocios, y también toda la comunidad hispana y no hispana.
And we know that this is not an issue that only affects immigrants, right? The immigrant community is everybody, right? And the city of Long Branch is being affected by the high rent increase.
Eso es todo. Muchísimas gracias. Esperemos que podamos contar con su apoyo.
That's all that I wanted to say to you today, and I hope that I can contribute your support. And rent control now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Marianne Estor. Yo vivo en la ciudad de Long Branch, en la Tercera Avenida, en el 336.
El 336.
De la Tercera Avenida, in Long Branch.
My, your name is?
Marianne Estor.
My name is Marianne Estor. I live in 336. Third Avenue, Long Branch.
Bueno, yo vengo a exponer también el mismo problema que muchos de nosotros estamos pasando en este momento. De un tiempo para acá, las rentas están incontrolables. Nosotros somos una clase trabajadora, pero desafortunadamente somos de los que nos están pagando un sueldo mínimo, que el sueldo mínimo no llega ni a los 10 dólares. Con 10 dólares por hora, trabajamos ocho horas, son 80 dólares por día. No nos alcanza, o compramos comida, o juntamos para pagar renta.
I only make 80 dollars a day, and I have to, you know, just do magic to make sure if I decide between paying my groceries or paying rent. And we're working-class people, and, you know, circumstances are really horrible at the moment and difficult, right? Because we're not getting enough money with our salaries. It's not enough for us.
Si hay más de dos niños en una familia, no podemos comprarles a veces, o compramos cereal, o compramos leche, compramos agua, compramos aceite. O sea, no, el sueldo que tenemos hasta ahorita no es un sueldo que podamos solventar. Comidas y renta. Pagar billes, estar bien con los niños. Niños van a crecer desnutridos porque el sueldo que tenemos hasta ahorita no es suficiente.
And what I'm making right now is not enough. I really have to decide between just buying milk, oil, or like paying bills and paying rent. So it's not enough for us at the moment.
Nosotros lo que estamos buscando, la comunidad hispana y no hispana, es lo que estamos buscando, es un control de rentas. Porque cada año los arrendatarios nos están subiendo una tarifa de 200 dólares anuales. Si nosotros continúa ese aumento de renta, nosotros no vamos a tener en dónde dormir más bajo de un puente.
And if this continues, we will have no place to sleep but under a bridge, right? And we know that this is not just affecting our immigrant community, Latino community, it's affecting everybody.
Sí, eso es todo por el momento. Yo es lo que tengo que decir. Espero que contar con su apoyo de ustedes. Ustedes está en sus manos ayudarnos a que el control de rentas pare.
Something else that I forgot to mention is that she mentioned that there has been an increase of like 200 dollars every year, right? That the landlords are just like doing whatever increase that they want to do in the community, right? So that's why they're asking for their support today to make sure that rent control passes.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dora Tovar, and I live in 31 Cedar Avenue, Unit Number 24. I'm here after I hear everybody complaining and everything. I have two cases to present. My daughter, she's Angela Lopez. She lives in 293 Liberty Avenue. She's a domestic abuse victim. She's a single mother now with three children, one in high school and two others in elementary school. Her rent is 1,900 dollars now, and by July, the rent is gonna be up to 2,650. It's a big incrementation in rent. She worked for Mamak Medical. She is also an student, online student. And I think that it's very necessary that we have to take actions in this issue and rent control because 600, 700, just at once incrementation is very, very much. And I'm a person, and I also speak for the third generation in here. I'm a citizen in Long Branch. I'm a disabled person living for social security. And I also speak in behalf of all these people that live in social security that have been pushing because of the big incrementation. That's what I came to expose today because it's necessary and I'm willing to volunteer in any steps necessarily to implement a rent control. And I want one of each of you, please, have in consideration, put it in the next agenda. And if you want suggestions, how, where, signs, signatures. And this is a community, not only the illegal immigrants, there is citizen people that live here. All citizens also with children from all kinds of nations. And it's necessary, this is not only affecting the Hispanic community, it's affecting people that for generations has been living in here in Long Branch. And it's necessary that we take one step ahead. In regards to the development, I see that there is 299 units to be developed in the new area in Broadway, and only 10% is being educated for the low-income people. I think in its 10% to 299, I think it should be a little incrementation if you're gonna implement that redevelopment. Please have in consideration the needs of everyone in the town. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mariana Ramon. I'm here to speak about my community. The abuses with landlords have been for decades. We, I've been here since 1987, and unfortunately, sometimes our building was sold to a new landlord. And when we get increases, I was fortunate to speak to Lloyders for free, and they said, "He's increasing too much, just cross here and cross there." Unfortunately, most of my, on that time, most of my, what you call, neighbors were elderly, disabled. They signed whatever were told. We, my sister, were fortunate not to sign those, I mean, the contract the way they were demanding, but we paid the consequence. Later on, the landlord took against us. And unfortunately, my sister was falsely arrested. Long Branch police is always corrupt, so she put a lot of false information. And everything, all of this is documented with Civil Rights, Trenton, and Newark. And I've been looking that we have no place really to rent. Since we came here, we struggled. The only apartment we found before, when I just got here, it was in Westen Avenue. One bedroom, the cost was 750 dollars. And my friends around here, they used to pay 450 dollars. But that was the only ad we saw in the newspaper, so we have to rent it. Now we ask Mayor Pallone, I know you for so many years, and I appreciate that, why this time listen to us? why this time listen to us? The previous mayor was a pest, he never listened our concern, he never saw the abuses we faced through the police. So now I'm asking you, we really need a rent control. In 2001, I complained about the abuses we were having, and somebody from Hackensett said, "We have rent control here in Hackensett, you should have it in Long Branch." And this was in 2001, now it's 2023. Most of my babysitter are going to Asbury Park, unfortunately, it's a very hot crime there area, and it's turning here also, but I mean, it's, also I've spoken about people who have business. A lot of my friends used to have restaurants in Broadway before they were torn down. Now are cleaning houses because they were not able to open another business. I had one of my friends here, she's working in a new business. I hope her business flourished because she's living here in many years on the community, and we contribute a lot. So I hope, I hope this time somebody listen to us. We really need rent control, and we need more, like, I don't understand why they spent 25 millions on the Wilbur Ray building just in renovations, when we need buildings to, for housing. The community has grown. We have more, more people from, let's say, Brazil, and I do babysit for those people, and their rent are so high right now. I hope you listen to us, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause] ¿Qué pasa? Ya les puedo traducir de la comunidad, si quieren hablar.
Yeah, you can. Is there anybody else who wants to speak?
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Yeah, we have Angela.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Angela. Yo vivo en 278 Liberty Street.
Excuse me, yeah, if I can, you've been interpreting, can you put your name and address on the record too, so we, just so we have the record clear, because you're doing most of the speaking.
Yes, my name is Heidi Torres, and I live in 1040 Bond Street, Elizabeth.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. And it would be nice to have an interpreter next time as well for the community. Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Angela Gómez. Vivo en la 278 Liberty Street in Long Branch.
My name is Angela Gómez, and I live in the 278 Liberty Avenue, Long Branch.
Pues yo también estoy aquí para expresar las altas, los altos incrementos de la renta. A mí me subieron 700 dólares al año, en este año, y al siguiente, en enero me volvieron a subir 100 dólares más, son 800 dólares que estoy pagando más.
I got a rent increase of 100 dollars just this year.
Pues yo también estoy pidiendo para que escuchen, para que vean la manera de, con los dueños, que va que, a nivel en la renta, porque realmente no, no podemos pagar 3,200, 4,000 dólares de renta. Yo es lo que estoy pagando, 4,000 dólares de renta por mi familia.
I am paying 4,000 dollars of rent for my family, and it's unfair for all those like high rent increases that landlords are doing in the community.
Más bilis estoy pagando casi alrededor de 6,000 dólares.
Plus, my bills are 600 dollars, and add that to food as well.
Es lo que pido para que nos escuchen, para que tomen el control, para que investiguen ustedes, y lo que los dueños están haciendo es normal, que nos estén subiendo tanta renta.
Is it really normal that they increased in the rent this much, right? So that's why I'm asking you to do in the community to see, you know, what's really happening for us.
Yo voy para 20 años en este país. He puesto mi corazón en este país. He aprendido el inglés, y estoy abriendo negocio ahora.
I've lived in this country for about 20 years, so I've been learning English, and now I'm about to open my business.
Vine por un sueño.
I came here for a dream.
He perdido familia.
I've lost my family.
Estando en este país.
While being in this country.
Porque en este país se dice que es el país de los sueños.
Because it says that this is the country of the dreams.
Doi gracias.
I'm thankful.
Por todo lo que he logrado en este país.
For everything that I've done in this country so far.
Todos venimos aquí para lograr algo, porque en nuestros países no tenemos las oportunidades.
And your economy?
Me he unido a muchos voluntarios, a la comunidad, a la iglesia, cuando han pasado desastres, para ayudar, porque soy útil en este país, todos somos útiles. Hasta porque me va a llamar emigración por no pagar la renta, para no que me pague la renta, porque me va a llamar emigración por no pagar la renta, para no que me pague la renta. Son cuatro meses que él me debe, y no es justo también.
And I also have instances where I've been threatened by other people that they're going to call ICE on me.
Solamente pido eso, que nos ayuden, a que haya un control de rentas, y gracias.
I only ask that you help us for rent control in Long Branch.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Okay. Is there anyone else? I need a motion to close.
So move.
Zaka. We will now, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to list of resolutions?
No changes have been made.
Okay, we can take the listed resolutions and set an agenda. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera Zapson, Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. There are no applications this evening for miscellaneous business for the good of the order. Councilwoman Dangler?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would like to express my condolences to the Kovan family. They lost their brother on this past Saturday. Second, I want to compliment all those employees that were involved in the Black History Program at the Cultural Center on Broadway. It was a great, great event. And as I was telling, telling the mayor, one of the things that I noticed was that we had people participate from Long Branch, of course, very talented, and also Asbury and Neptune. And for a few minutes, we almost had church with the good, the singing, the gospel music that was sang by two soloists. So it was, it was a very good, good time, and I just wanted to, again, let the, let the people know who put it on, it was hard work, I'm sure, but they did a great job and made Long Branch proud. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vogt?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight. You delivered a very important message. It was very courageous for you to come up and speak your mind, and it was important, it was well done, and we thank you for, for doing that. I also want to, again, last time I thanked Director Broughton, I'm gonna thank him again tonight, this time for, for having spoken with the FMBA and talking to them about if they would support our HERS Association, and many of you know by now that our HERS Task Force is the mayor's task force against substance use disorders. They were very generous with their support for HERS. It's such an important issue for us to deal with in, in our city. So again, thanks to you, and please extend thanks from our whole association for their generosity and their support of us. So thank you for coming out tonight, and be safe till we see you again.
Thank you. Councilwoman Selly?
Good evening, everybody. I would like to thank everyone who came out tonight, and I particularly want to thank the group who gave their presentation, the African-American Cultural Club. It was very nice to see everybody, and thank you so much. And with that, I don't have anything else to say, except have a good evening.
Thank you. Mayor Pall?
I'd also like to say thank you for everyone for coming this evening, and we appreciate all comments. I'm glad that you came up and spoke this evening. I have two announcements I wanted to mention. Congressman Pallone announced this week that he secured 13.2 million dollars in federal funding for the Long Branch pedestrian tunnel and upgrades at the Long Branch train station. The tunnel will reconnect the east and west sides of the city at the railroad station. The grant will also fund other upgrades to the station and surrounding areas, including reconstruction of the commuter parking lot, ride share and taxi service, construction of a heated pedestrian overhang for bus service, and landscape improvements. And the other item I just wanted to point out to everyone that the city will offer, be offering free COVID and flu vaccines again this Saturday, February 25th, from 10 to 2 o'clock at the Adam Bucky James Community Center. With that, I'd just like to, again, thank everyone for coming tonight, and have a great week.
Thank you, Mayor. And I too would like to thank the students for speaking tonight on Black History Month, and for all of you who came out this evening to express your concerns. We will take everything under consideration, I would like to thank you for that. With that, I'd like to wish everyone a good week, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening. Thank you.